I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which is peace, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
First order of business is Jeff, advocate and Scott will not be here tonight, so we can have you as we sit down. Next is public comments, are there any public comments right now that's not on the agenda? There are none, opposing public comments at 7:03. Do you approve of their public ten minutes? Is there a motion? There are seconds? Any discussions? All change. There are none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed opposed. To me. Kel, you have to update because you want to hear it. Next, first on the agenda is pursuant RSA 676 code for a sub-division of the site plans. Paragraph thirty-two dash two thirty-six, four globally housing, new market nature. Continue which our public hearing shall be held for an application filed by the RLM builders LLC requesting minor subdivision of the site plan, special huge permit approval for proposed development seeking to create a split lot subdivision, the original one five-four rate is retained in existing single-family housing. The new lot seven point two-two eight is a property thirty-two, second thirty.
Yeah, I just said something.
Thirty-two unit age restricted to multifamily development, associated utilities, parking, landscaping, and stone water irrigation infrastructure located on a real property with an address of two forty-two South Main Street, tax map view for lot sixty-nine, the R2 zoning district. So, with that, we'll continue the public hearing. FX, I guess at the last meeting we were at a point where you had developed some architectural ideas that you wanted to publicly present to us tonight.
Yes. An update please? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, my name is FX, Regina, Regina Barrow-Birdler, and I'm here representing the applicant, and with us is a representative.
Is it FX? Can you hear?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it?
It's on.
Yeah.
It's operating.
Okay. Last time I didn't have my hearing, it's nowadays. I can. No one else can. All set? I'll speak louder.
Speak more, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak louder. So in any event, I was just introducing myself, we have the same team here, we've got the representatives of the applicant, the engineers here, as well as the landscape architect and the architect of the buildings here, and all of them have been up to present to you because that's an important part of this. And what we did was, we actually, again, I said this the last time, we listened to what the concerns of the board were, we listened to the letters, we actually, while we were in the meeting, we asked for recess and talked to one of the letters, and I think he has some favorable comments when he came back to the voting, and we thought we might actually be able to ask for approval, subject to the design suggestions that were made and that we agreed to, but then we thought, well, we just, let me come back with the drawings thanks for the project long enough that we should at least have, you know, a formal look at exactly what we wanted to do. And so, we presented the architecture, and we'll have a very, very brief presentation of what we changed, but I think we agree that this is certainly a significant difference on where we started, and again, it's a process that we embrace, and I think this worked too, and I think we all did a good job coming to a point where we could address the concerns of the board and hopefully the concerns of the butter, and with a plan that still works and that provides obviously the most important thing, which is affordable housing for the community. So, the other thing that happened is during the interim between the meetings, kind of fortuitous, we had a butter write to us and ask that we add a fence so that it blocks some of the parking lights, and so, we're going to describe that very briefly again to you, we agreed to that right away. And this board also, Jane mentioned that she'd like to see the existing rock wall kept in place, and so, we're going to do that. So, that's another positive thing that we can kind of report back to the board.
The other thing?
The other thing that kind of came up in some of the discussion, and hopefully this would put this to bed, is we were originally at fifty-five and older plan, and what this plan now represents is a sixty-two and older, to alleviate any of those concerns, every resident, not just one or two in each unit, every resident would have to be sixty-two and older. So I think that really addresses some of those concerns that some people may have had in terms of other people coming in that were younger, et cetera, and all that. So I think you hopefully can see that the developers listening to those concerns, making the adjustments that we think are appropriate, satisfying the criteria that is in front of you. We went through that criteria publicly for two meetings worth of time, and I think we very much accomplished the goal of explaining why we met that criteria, and I think that this plan represents a culmination of that effort, and we ask for your approval tonight. And then again, have NiHao come up and describe the changes, I want to rehash everything, and have Robbie Woodburn come up and just describe where we're going to put the fence, which again was after request, that'll be in the butter, and if you have any questions of us, we're obviously happy to address them.
Wait, no. Sixty-two and older is the first I've heard of that, that's a, is that a different federal category? How does that?
Yeah, there's, excuse me, under the Fair Housing Act, there's two levels of exemption from the Fair Housing Act. One is fifty-five and older, and it doesn't necessarily require everyone to be fifty-five and older. There's another level that you can exempt everyone who's not sixty-two and older, and if you do that, you have to limit it to only the people that are sixty-two and older. So it's a second form of exemption, you don't hear it that often, but we wanted to raise the age here to address, again, the need that we're trying to accomplish is elderly assisted housing. So that does exist under the Fair Housing Act, that's the second exemption. You just don't hear it.
Yeah, I never heard. So, but so, every person then would have to be sixty-two or older, correct? If their spouse is younger, they?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Great, thank you. I have to ask NiHao come up and say what we changed.
Please, can I have a smile? Can I have a present for us in the parking lot?
Please speak up, so I'll leave him here.
Sure. Is it better?
Hold on one second, we have the question, we have the ten.
Yeah, yeah, be careful, then I'll be right back.
The connector between the front house and the back house was more toned down into more gray tones. And if we were to jump into the page P four. Street front at the page top of the sheet, or from the parking lot, also really representing how those two structures come together as one piece. I'm trying to find any other changes that we have applied to the building that really summarizes it. We've maintained the same program with the same footprint under a different look within just adjusted shell. And this truly is the response of the comments we've heard on the last session, that were mostly regarding that back house street face elevation. Like, street face elevation. Thank you.
Any board members have questions?
Is there a diagram showing where the fence is going?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I am Robbie Woodburn from Woodburning Company. The plan has changed, stayed the same with the exception of this additional fence. When we get to the plan, I can point it out, but one of the butters called in was concerned that headlights from the parking lot that are, when the headlights were into the street, that they would be seen between, over the two-and-a-half foot berm and between those trees that are eight feet tall and nine feet on center. So, you know, we all know that those evergreens are going to grow together, but in the meantime, there was concern about the light coming through. So what we did was illustrated a fence along, between the parking lot side of the berm and the bio-retentioned swabbing part, can you just kind of run your? Is that on? That's not the light.
It would be right here.
Nope. So, that's interesting. I have the time with me if I can, can I email it to you?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm ready.
I don't. Is this the sheet label, Robbie? L two?
Yeah.
This is the board. That's why it's got no subdivision.
I see a four-foot-high board fence.
It's on L two.
Yeah, it's on that.
Interesting. It's not on that, it's not on that L two.
Yeah, it is.
Is it? It's on every side.
No.
No, then it should run behind those trees. No. I can get up and point to the screen so you guys can see.
Why, well, why don't you? Robbie, just.
Can't, barely hear you. I'll speak up, sorry.
Robbie, just for the sake of the experience, why don't you sit down for a minute while we get corrected, and we'll ask any other questions that anybody else may have, so we can. You guys, FX, do you have anything else to present?
No.
Okay.
The change in the lot size.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we addressed that, and I think Bart mentioned that was a little size issue.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, we, there was an issue on the lot size of the lot to be subdivided out, so we had to address that issue.
Yep, and I'll just add to that while Bart's looking for the PDF. Essentially, all it did now was to reduce the overall density by I think two units, but since we were at thirty-nine and they were looking to do thirty, now we're at thirty-seven and they're looking to do thirty, so we really got to work that.
Just for the public, it brings the subdivision now into compliance where it had not been previously because of the way you're calculating. So, the house, remaining house lot has been increased in size, but it doesn't, it doesn't have the impact on number of units.
What part still has any board members have any questions for the applicant?
So, what is that minimum lot size?
Half acre. The half acres only, the part.
So it's a minor change from what was there originally?
Yes. There we go.
So, if you want to zoom in a little bit closer to the berm, that'd be great. So, on the north side of the berm, above the evergreens, you can see a dotted line. Bart, if you can point to that, that'd be great. Yeah, right there, that he's following that line, on the, on the north side of the berm, there will be a four-foot-high board fence that, because it's four-foot high, is eighteen inches above the top of the berm, which knock out headlights on that, on the, from the cars that face that way. That fence extends all the way across the berm and across behind the two entry trees on either side of the driveway. Obviously, we can't put the fence across the driveway, and there will be lights coming out of the driveway. We've also repeated it on the other side of the driveway, so to the extent possible, we've added additional screen, additional screen with that fence to get out any of the headlight shining that would come from the parking lot until those trees grow in.
Okay, thank you. Again, any board members have any questions? Is there anything else you would like to present?
No, thank you.
Butters, anything you would like to say to anything tonight, or anything else you've heard?
All right, can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I know I'm new on Mike, I live on Tanner Circle, which is right off Percy and Denver Development a little bit ago. I highlight that because I am pro-development, new market needs new housing, but I do have a lot of concerns about this project. I've been following along online, it's great that you guys present these things online, but I wanted to have a couple key points for y'all, just to share my perspective, as someone who's been in town for a little over a year. What attracted me and my wife to New Market is the small-town feel with the burgeoning downtown. You guys have done an incredible job of maintaining residential areas as residential, and you've done an incredible job of making downtown downtown. When I come here with my wife and the eleven other families that moved into our neighborhood, the idea of walking to school is unbelievable, right? Future kids, future roles, that stuff, safety is mission critical to what attracts folks here. I think a lot about that when these projects come up, not just this project, but the planning part of our job. We're going to hear about a forty-one space parking lot later today, so we're adding sixty cars, maybe even more, to one street where kids walk to and from school, people walk to and from town. That attractiveness of what I liked about New Market, that small-town feel disappears pretty quickly. We can design this any way we want, it doesn't change the fact that it's a three-story, very usual place in a small residential town area. That's one of the highlights, that what attracted me as a young person to New Market is that small-town feel, and from a planning perspective, I think we can plan for that really well. I wanted to highlight the school, for folks that don't know, enrollment in the school was dropping. The area best served for schools are right next to the school, if we want to attract folks to come here. I don't see sixty-two plus units helping us keep kids in school and helping our school development grow as well, too. So when I think about this project, I think about the word planning quite a bit. How are we planning for the future of New Market? I took the survey that Bart sent out a little bit ago to add context to that, I think there's a lot of potential, and folks are thinking about using it as well, too, but what's really great about where I live is it's residential. There is a downtown, it's exciting to get to downtown, but it's residential. It attracted me here as a young person, it keeps folks in the venue of New Market here for a long time. So I would ask the board to consider, what is our plan for New Market, and how does this fit with that? Any question or anything like that? This is my first time coming to one of these, so maybe I can answer, let me know.
Thank you. Very well spoken. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Gail Waszewski, I live at two thirty-six South Main Street. Granted, I'm in a butter, only the very far end of my property, a bus. When I first started coming to these meetings, I was told that all the butters who had been given a letter or met with the respective owner with their concerns, I never received one. I got a letter from a surveyor who said, if you got any questions, people will be walking around the property, etc. Never heard any more of it. Was it for Linda, I wouldn't even realize what was happening in our neighborhood. My concern isn't even with the building, because I don't see it, but I live on a street where the speed limits are not kept. There's no sidewalk, you're talking elderly people walking in the road, you don't want to put in the sidewalk. There's been three accidents in that corner this year alone. What's going to happen if there isn't safety? Now, I see where that's coming out onto one fifty-two, but I don't see any precautions, I don't see anything up there that tells me what safety steps have been taken. That's a schulzum. There are children there all the time, no parking can be across the street during school time hours. So, it, to me, means there's going to be parking on the side of the road, which we already see with building stuff going on right above moonlight bridge when you're coming up into town. The parking on both sides of that road, there's no room for somebody swerving, no way to pull off the road. So, safety, 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 I can't stand that. If I walk across that street every single day with my dog, and I hope that I can make it across without somebody having to slam on their brakes or to hit me, and the police have been doing surveys of speed limits only in one direction, that doesn't tell you a thing. People coming from downtown up one fifty-two are going forty and fifty miles an hour all day long, except between the hours of seven and eight AM. Why is that? Because there's a cruiser sitting on Pond Street. So putting in, and I don't care who, who says what, when you're sixty-three years old, they're still driving cars, so it means they're not going to have company. I'm just concerned about.
Thank you.
Can we confirm the letter to you? She said she was in.
Anybody else?
Steve Sarazzi, two forty-four South Main Streets. Just basically like to say that, at this point, I think this project in particular has come a long way, and I think that we have something that's palatable, from, at least from my perspective, can't speak for all the butters, but it's certainly much better than where we started. But I think speaking to the rural character of your community for, on a long-term basis, this type of zoning in this type of residential area really needs to be highlighted.
Nobody move. I don't think so. We'll go ahead and try to talk to him.
Hello? All right. Just, just like, the rural character of your community with these types of developments being allowed in this type of an area is really something that you've got to look long and hard at. As the young man said there, you know, your downtown area is what brings people to this community, with the residential character and rural character that you have, and if this type of development continues, you're basically stomping all over that rural character. So, I would really think long and hard, look at your zoning ordinances on a long-term basis, and make sure that your residents understand, I mean, we didn't understand when we bought this property right next door, that this was even feasible on a property this small. So, that's really all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Why not, right? We can keep it going. Sure. I think you just absolutely nailed it, right? Like, what is the character of New Market? Because this board decides what this character is. This board decides who we want to attract to New Market, this board decides how we want to keep folks here, keep folks invested in the community. When you look outside your window, you're invested in that community, right? When these folks look outside their window, what are they going to see? Are they going to be invested in that community? Are they going to be invested in the success of what they see across the street, the folks walking, the dog, right? I think one of the hard things is feedback without suggestions, it's just complaining, right? So, we've done a nice job of making suggestions and making progress here, but we have to ask ourselves with that survey, what are we actually trying to solve for here? What are the issues the town is facing? What are areas of concern? Housing solves a lot of problems. I think this project makes sense on just about any other street, right? But where it is right now, I don't think it adds to the neighborhood development, I don't think it adds to the character, and I think we put ourselves in a tough spot where we have one building on that street that's three stories high with thirty units and matches nothing else on that street. Who are we trying to attract? Who are we trying to keep? Who wants the plan for New Market?
Thank you.
The Dozier, two forty-nine South Main. The contractor's done a great job with the new design of the building and answering any of our concerns. The only problem, it is still too big. Three stories is too high for that building, it's right up in the open, coming off from Grant Road, coming from Wally Falls. You know, housing is needed, but some housing is better than that at all, if they could try to make this even smaller, it just doesn't fit into the neighborhood still, the size of it doesn't. His design has done a wonderful job on that, much better than when we started a year ago on this project. I'd like to see some single-family homes to keep it in the neighborhood like it is, and all of us know each other there, and it's just a neighborhood sense of a street, not a apartment building type. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So, I can get Barbara, are you there? Can you unmute yourself? Stop sharing the screen. So, we were, I wanted to question, um, we marked, she did very well support, but.
Share anything at the chat?
Yes, share anything at the chat. She's on the screen.
Are you not projecting the same?
No.
What's on the screen? Does it say New Market eight?
No, it's left feet. I'm not seeing her.
Okay. Alrighty.
Can you hear anything?
Oh.
Can you hear now, Barbara?
She's not on it.
She's not there.
Yeah, that's at seven oh five. All right.
She's there. Can I just emphasize what she would, has already said at least to the board, so at least we have it in our mind, and that last name is, put words into her mouth, but I'll use her words, she said there's fifty-two elderly disabled applicants waiting. I'm sorry, I apologize. She mentioned in her letter that there were fifty-two elderly disabled applicants waiting for assistance, and then she's, excuse me, sorry, she said the need for.
Yeah, that's at seven oh five. Alright.
Can I just emphasize what she would, has already said at least to the board?
Absolutely.
At least we have it in our mind, and that last one was put words into her mouth, but I'll, I'll use her words. She said there's fifty-two elderly disabled applicants waiting... I'm sorry, I apologize. She mentioned in her letter that there were fifty-two elderly disabled applicants waiting for assistance, and then she's, excuse me, sorry. She said the need for assistance in Newmarket for affordable housing cannot be overstated. And on behalf of the Newmarket Housing Authority and the Board of Commissioners, we enthusiastically support this effort. I'm hopeful that's what she would have said, because that's what she wrote. I think that when you talk about planning, and, and I ask you to respect what this board already did, which was create a zone, sometimes people who may have moved in recently forget that you did that so that you could afford housing in, in this town and not just buy new homes. And the elderly particularly are in a tough situation. And so this board created the opportunity for a developer to create an opportunity for the elderly who needed affordable housing. And sometimes when you're in a new subdivision, and people may not have liked them in that one, and you forget that those are the needs of the community. And I, I had to read those words, because I think Barbara Hall summed up that need extremely well, better than I could, and that's why I'm basically using her words. And I'm hopeful that you can reflect that we met and basically exceeded every requirement in terms of not exceeding or not going to limits on many, many of the criteria, and in fact, meeting all the criteria. So I, I just hope that with all of this hard work, we get to a point where you can approve this, give a special permit, and we appreciate your time and effort on this very important project. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Zambales have anything they'd like to add? Alright, hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing. It's seven, I have seven forty. Seven forty-one. Alright, so for the board, the first thing we should do is discuss, and we need to vote on the waiver request.
Can we, can we confirm all the Butters were notified? One Butters saying she was not notified. Because otherwise, our vote... What happens if the Butters were not properly notified?
I just reviewed the Butters list and the labels that were sent out. Two thirty-six, South Main Street was actually owner of two different parcels, and they were indeed noticed.
I'm sorry, Steve?
They owned two different parcels. Or at least that's the way that it was listed in our Butters list. And I just checked the labels and their, their address. Galen Edmund Wazuski.
Okay, so that's U four seventy-one, which is the abutting parcel.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct. And then there was another one as well, I thought, I forgot.
Is that you have a sort of...
Yeah, U four seventy-one A and seventy-one B.
The, the site plan only has U four seventy-one.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So Bart, do you want to fill us in on the waiver request?
Yes, it's on section three point oh two, B five, B one, small A two. It's parking lot designed to vegetable standards. Essentially, your standard stalls in town are nine by eighteen feet. And in the ADA handicap accessible, it requires the stalls to be twenty feet in length, which doesn't make a great deal of sense, because essentially you're going to have the divided aisle in between those two stalls, sticking out two feet into the twenty-five foot drive aisle, which, you know, is kind of counterproductive and illogical, in our opinion. And ADA compliant stalls are eighteen feet in length. And the longest non-commercial handicap van, wheelchair accessible van, that we could find is just under seventeen feet, so the entire vehicle will fit within the eighteen-foot long stall. So that, that was basically our arguments, just to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Does anybody have any questions? I want to take a motion on the waiver.
Make a motion and we grant the waiver request by the applicant to reduce the ADA requirements from nine feet, from twenty feet in depth to eighteen feet, based upon the information supporting that request given by, provided by the applicant.
Is there a second?
Well, second.
Seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion for the waiver is, passes six to zero. Alright, now we have the special permit, so we should go through like we did a couple meetings ago. We should go through the criteria point by point. Okay.
So, in my notes, really, two, two prime tests. One, would it be of a whole benefit for elderly formal housing on this specific site? Is there a need for, and, at the end, with the consent from the presence? And then if so, the second prime test is, you know, if those people who are directly affected by this development, will their property values decrease because of this development? So you're looking at from a holistic, ten thousand view approach, and then to really on the ground, you know, directly, you know, people who would be affected by this development. So based on the information we have, we provide to...
Yep. So what's the thoughts of everybody? Don't all speak at once. Yeah, Mikel? Okay, thank you. Abby?
I'm going to read, read what is stated there. Community of a whole public interest is served as stated there's sixty-two elderly applicants that are on the waitlist, so as a whole, there is a, a need and demand clearly for these specific units. And number two, we obviously have brought in a master appraiser, and our space judge and all, whether or not our faith would have any diminution value.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, so I, I also agree, you know, based on the Newmarket Housing Authority and personal needs that I know of in the community, that there is a need for this type of unit in town that would be a benefit. And I can even potentially make a, make a case that having elderly housing directly across the street from the school, while we presented that as a negative on a lot of cases, could actually be a benefit in that I could see, you know, I think of myself growing up and being able to walk home from school and go to my grandparents'. And I could see that you could potentially have kids growing up, going to the elementary school, who could go across the street to their grandparents for elderly care, or for, you know, childhood care after school, rather than go home to potentially an empty house. So I think that, you know, it presents an interesting situation, even at that location. I think the benefits outweigh it, so.
Thank you. Jane?
I believe that the changes done help address any negative impact, and we've also had the master review done, and they stated that would not happen. I believe that there is a public interest as well, is served by having senior housing.
Val?
Basically, based upon the information provided by the Newmarket Housing Authority, the public interest is served for the community. This zoning was voted in many years ago in order to create this type of housing in need for the community. As far as prong two, based upon the testimony from both the town assessor and the New Hampshire Licensed Appraiser, Senior Appraiser, there's been no other qualified testimony presented that would lead me to believe there would be a diminution value.
Okay. Thank you. And I agree with that. Don't need to add any more to it, everybody's spoken on that. Bart, should we vote on these one by one, or just, just go through them? Okay. Alright, number three, that any conflicts with character of the adjacent properties will be minimal in terms of the size and bulk of the visible buildings, through the use of buffers, landscaping, or location of the buildings on site. This provision is meant to assure that facilities are reasonably consistent, either with residential style buildings, or sufficiently secluded so as to minimize negative impacts to abutting property. So we'll go through the same thing. Jane, you want to start this time?
Yeah, I believe that they've met the, the conditions.
Okay. Timothy?
Yeah, so I think that the changes, that the developer's been very willing to come to the changes and, and made several amends to that. So I, I think this one is also met, at this time, based on the changes that we've been able to make.
Okay. Abby?
I agree with Jane and Timothy. They don't want so far as having defense, you know, further help with visibility and lights.
Val?
Yeah, as opposed to, as relative findings of facts, with the, the changes in both the landscaping design and building architecture, that they, it is now consistent with the residential style buildings, and it is also sufficiently secluded to minimize negative impacts.
Thank you. Mikel? Yes, three, yeah. Okay. Alright. And I agree that the changes, I think it's a much better project now than what we started with. I think the architecture is much better. Number four, the development shall be landscaped so, as so as to enhance the compatibility with the town, with emphasis given to the use of existing natural features where possible. Abby, do you want to start this time?
Four and five.
Ah, four.
It's actually E five.
Oh, I, I'm looking at a different piece of paper. Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, E five, yes, yes. So this is the design and site layout of the development shall emphasize the rural character of the town, maximize the privacy of the dwelling units, preserve the natural character of the land, provide for separation of parking and neighboring residential uses, and consider such factors as orientation, energy, usage, views, et cetera. There we are.
I'll do that one. Alright, emphasize rural character of the town, number one. I say yes, and the entire building matches the colonial future with the doghouse formers. They've done more than they did last time, and they're even keeping the rock wall, which is great. To maximize the privacy of the dwelling units, that they've done, between the fencing and the wall burn, they've done a good job at keeping the building separated from the rest of the properties. Number three, preserve the natural character of the land. Yes, and they've already even added more trees. For, provide for separation of parking and neighboring residential units, yes, they went ahead and again added fencing to eliminate additional lighting for cars.
Thank you. Timothy?
Yep, so I, I also agree. I think that the changes that have been made to the architecture are, are pretty drastic, and I actually really like the design, especially the new design that you guys came with today. So I think it, it actually, you know, looking at it, well, we don't have the picture up there anymore, but looking at it from the front, from the street, you're looking at a colonial that you would see anywhere you're driving around Nottingham, Dover, Brentwood, Exeter, any town like that. So I, I think it does blend in with the character of the town now, and I appreciate that. As far as the privacy and the natural character of the land, I think the, the actions to build, put the fencing to shield additional headlights are key, and as well as the, the emphasis that was put on the selection of the shade of the, the trees along the roadway for, for maximizing that privacy. So I think this one is also met.
Thank you. Mikel? Okay. Thank you. Jane?
I believe one, two, three, and four were met. And I think they were met because the developer listened to the input from the community, and that was very nice to see.
Val?
I would agree with comments made by Abby and Tim. I would go on to say preserving the natural character of the land was specifically done by not developing the other upland areas, which would have a more important impact on if that natural vegetation was removed, or the wetlands crossing, so they did a good job there. And then with the orientation of the, the building relative to the parking and the additional landscaping they have provided for the separation of parking and neighboring residential uses.
Thank you. I agree with that. Six?
Yeah, E six, I just had this as a, even its creative year, just because the waiver wasn't granted, so.
So we don't need to talk about that, because you granted the waiver, right? Excuse me, I'm sorry? Yes, yes, yep. So Bart, what's the process now?
Just one more.
One more?
Three is not applicable.
Right.
They're not looking for an increased density.
Yeah. So we have now to vote on special permit. Since you discussed it, you can either do that first, or you do the site plan and something that you can...
I'll say we don't listen, I'll do this first.
Yeah, that's it. So you just vote all at once, you know? So yeah, so just do...
So we need to vote on special permit?
Yes.
Then we vote separately on the subdivision?
Yeah.
If the special permit passes?
So special permit first, and subdivision second.
Yes. Okay. Does everybody want to make a motion?
And you can have discussion on that motion, too.
Sure.
Yeah, so you don't have to rush it.
Do the findings of facts need to be restated into the motion? Do the findings of facts need to be restated into the motion?
Based on planning, back end of planning notes.
Okay.
And the discussion that at this meeting. If you were to.
Okay, well, that'd be part of the, okay. Do you want to take an attempt at a motion, Val?
Yeah, make a motion to grant the special use permit. I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I make a motion to grant the special use permit for the proposed development to permit senior elderly housing, affordable housing pursuant to RSA 674-4, at 242 South Main Street, tax map U four, lot 69, within the RT zoning district, based upon the findings of facts presented at the meeting this evening, relative to the discussion of the planning board members and the staff notes by the town planner, that the applicant has met all criteria required for the said special use permit.
And it's, we want to say that it's sixty-two and over, sixty-two and over?
That would be a condition of the site plan, too. I have conditions subsequent to that later.
Okay.
Because that's not part of the special use permit criteria to grant it.
Yeah, I was just thinking of that as.
Okay.
Unless you want to put that on public.
No, that's fine. That's fine. No, that's fine. We just need to make sure we memorialize it, okay?
Yeah, no, if we do the site plan, I want to add that as condition.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to add or change to that motion? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a second.
A second. Go ahead.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call vote.
Okay, roll call, all right. Roll call vote. Mikail? Opposed? Abigail?
Approved.
Jane?
Approved.
Approved.
And I approve. Five to one. Special permit passes.
Let's separate them out, let's do subdivision votes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the proposed subdivision for map U four, lot 69, into two parcels, one parcel being 6.92 acres and the remaining parcel to be 8.4 acres.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Approved.
Abigail?
Approved.
Tim?
Approved.
Jane?
Approved.
Val?
Approved.
Aye, approved. So that motion passes five to one. One more?
Site plan?
Yep.
Tried to move.
Abby did.
Bart, do you want to go through your conditions?
So I, conditions approval, you, so conditions precedent, so all conditions precedent must be met prior to the conditions of building permit. Of course, when the site plan shall undergo a final review and receive approval from the director of planning and development, director of environmental services, the town engineer, the ways to development, developments, water, sewer, stormwater systems, in compliance with the plan board's decision issued on December 12th, 2023. Two, the applicant shall submit revised site plan after receiving final approval from the town staff and have it endorsed by the plan board chair, and subsequently, according to the Rockland County District E's, three, applicant shall submit an updated maintenance plan as relates to stormwater to the planning department and engineer for review and approval pursuant to standards enumerated in section H, stormwater, E, inspection and maintenance plans of the county's state stormwater management regulations, Mr. Cole, Town Engineer.
Can we add one more before you jump?
Yes.
The condition precedent, number four, that the applicant shall submit deed restriction covenants to the town's legal council for approval that all residents must be sixty-two and older as allowed to be restricted under the Federal Fair Housing Act.
The rule mounted, conditions subsequent, following conditions subsequent, preliminary blow must be met prior to commencement of construction, prior to pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall submit updated construction schedule. Two, prior to pre-construction meeting, all erosion control measures must be placed along the appropriate flagging along the limit of clearing and grading. And three, prior to, prior to pre-construction meeting, applicant shall enter into agreement with the town and inspectional services in order to determine compliance during construction with the plan board's decision and include plans. Four, applicant shall have pre-construction meeting with the town staff and facilities. Five, applicable, the applicant shall submit all state and federal approvals. Following this, conditions subsequent, preliminary blow must be met prior to conditions specific occupancy, natural plan, shall be submitted or reviewed by the town, Newmarket, or in state meeting in order to determine compliance with the plan board's decision. Two, applicant shall submit all applicable impact fees and water and sewer system development charges, following, following schedule shall apply. A, residential impact fees, multifamily, five plus, this is per unit, public schools, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, multiplied by thirty, which is split two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Number two, recreational facilities, that's two hundred and seventy-six dollars per unit.
Seven ninety.
Seven ninety, multiplied by thirty, which is eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. And B, system development charges, support and sewer, and one B, water, wire connection fee per unit is three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine, subject to confirmation, excuse me, sixty-four, subject to confirmation, and anticipated gallons per day usage. Number two, voice wire connection fee per unit, three thousand five hundred and twenty-six, subject to confirmation of anticipated gallons per day usage. Those are the conditions, right.
So on number two, on the condition subsequent, prior to commencement of construction, I would add after grading to ensure no impacts to wetlands or buffers. And I would add item number six.
To ensure?
Yeah, to ensure no impacts to wetlands or buffers, or wetland buffers.
Sheriff, can I address one of the conditions of approval because we didn't have an opportunity?
Yeah, just let us finish this and then we'll do that, yeah, yeah.
And then add number six, again, this is prior to commencement of construction, that the applicant record the sixty-two or older occupancy deed restriction as approved by the town's legal council. If it's recorded.
Okay. So Bart, one question I have, sixty-two and over residential unit, a residential isn't exempt from the public school?
They would have to come and ask for a waiver.
Ask for a waiver, okay.
That's what I was going to raise.
And then one other item on number seven, hopefully it's on issue, no parking on route, and that there will also be no parking on Route 152 or South Main Street.
Yeah, we talked about that.
During construction, but as a condition.
Yep.
Although, after the fact, that's going to be a town issue.
Right.
My only concern is asking for a waiver with respect to the school impact because we're now restricted to property to sixty-two and over for every occupant, so we're not going to be impacting the school. And we can either deal with it with staff and or the council or something, but I would ask that it not be a conditional approval, only for that limited.
It's required under our ordinance unless you ask for a written waiver and give the basis for the waiver.
Right, so, I mean, in a sense, I'm asking for the waiver orally, I can write it down, and the basis is clearly that we are going to be restricted to sixty-two and older. There would be no other project that would be able to ask a waiver other than one, and no one does sixty-two and over, so I'm asking for that waiver.
I have no problem with that, I mean, they're gonna.
No.
Yeah, it's true.
If the somebody sixty-two is going to the schools, we're.
I would have a condition that FX puts that in writing, obviously.
Yeah, and just to buttress this, I'm not asking for the recreational waiver, which I probably could ask for, but, you know, I'm close to, hopefully I can throw a frisbee, but just asking for this waiver.
Submit a waiver request, and we can deal with the meeting.
No, I don't think.
No, because you'd have to go, you'd have to do a butters notice.
I think.
Are they asking for a tax relief on your sixty-two and over?
No, 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 there's a fee that's for the public schools, they're asking for a waiver from that because they're sixty-two and over, no other tax relief.
Because the project won't have an impact on the schools.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't hear it's going.
Yeah, okay, good.
So we haven't, so, yes, so right now, just submit FX.
Well, so let's just take that out of the.
There's no motion yet.
No, I know, we're not going to include that as part of the motion, I'm going to say, right? And he's gonna.
First the waiver, you'll have to request waiver, then you make the motion for site plan approval, then it's clean.
Mm-hmm.
So we vote on the waiver first.
Right.
We got to make it easier than that.
No.
No.
So I would make a motion that we waive the public school impact fee based upon the premise that this project will be sixty-two or older and therefore no occupants will actually have an impact on the schools.
Is there a second to that motion? Any discussion?
So is that, is that a standard practice for, is the first, certainly the first one that we've had for sixty-two or over?
Well, oftentimes, we might grant a waiver if it's for an accessory apartment.
Yeah, but the purpose, like as mentioned from the crowd, right, as mentioned, the public school impact fee is impacts fee based on the fact that the people residing in that building will be potentially sending kids to the school and having an impact on having to expand the school or something.
Correct.
And I can add, just for the record, 674-21E is the statute that allows for that, and it has a specific rationality test, so there has to be a rational, the project has to cause that impact to that particular, and that's the legal rationale.
Okay. Yeah, if we had this part of the conditions, they'd be back asking for a waiver, we'd be dealing with it in a month or whatever, we might as well just deal with it now.
Right, yes. Make the discussion.
All right. So the motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor of granting the waiver subject to the written waiver being submitted by the applicant tonight? Say yes.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say no. Motion passes six zero zero.
Just reference to 242 South Main Street, how we twelve housing dollar.
We need to learn how to scribble faster, FX. You put a lot of legal terms in there now that we got to look at?
Yeah, I'll read it to you, I just can't write. So references to 242 South Main Street, elderly housing affordable, waiver of public school impact fee, dear planning board, the applicant requests a waiver from public school impact fee as all residents shall be sixty-two years of age or older and will have no impact on the public school in Newmarket. Francis Booton, attorney general.
Thank you. That will suffice, would you please give that to Bart, I guess, have that in the record? Is there anything else anybody would like to add to conditions? Okay, so I guess I need a motion, did you already make a motion, Val?
No.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the application for the residential site plan at 242 South Main Street, tax map U four, lot 69, to permit the thirty units of affordable elderly housing, age restricted to sixty-two or older, substitute the conditions outlined on the planners' report dated December 12th, 2023, as amended through discussion this evening to add number four, on condition precedence, the amendment to number two on condition subsequent follow, prior to commencement of construction, the addition of number six and number seven, and then base point, and then wait, deleting the public schools impact fee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did you say thirty or thirty-four years?
Thirty.
Okay.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five to one. Thank you, FX, thank you. Thank all the butters, we have a much better project here today than we did when it started, appreciate all your input.
And we want to thank your patience and your efforts as well, we agree with you and look forward to holding a.
We need to, thank you. We need to go through vesting now?
Yeah, vesting is now here.
Yep. So do you want to read that part to the record?
So subdivision, site plan approval, vesting, the subdivision, site plan approval shall be deemed to have perhaps forty-eight months after the date of approval, unless active substantial development as commenced within the set period as provided by RSA 674-4139. For the purpose of vesting, site plan approval, shall be deemed to have temporary vesting rights for a period of five years after the date of plan approval of the plans provided by the site improvements, assuming the approved landscaping. Improvements in building's foundation and exterior are constructed within twenty-four months after the date of this approval. Permanent vesting shall be granted upon substantial completion as shown on the plans and conditional approval at the December 12th, 2023 meeting. Substantial completion shall occur after grading foundation work is completed, installation of the supporting infrastructure, for example, parking, water, sewer, drainage, and other facilities, and it's, appeal of the decision, this conditional approval is subject to the all representations and statements made by the applicant engineer to the planning board during their review process. Any appeal of the planning board's decision pursuant to RSA 677-4115, any person agreed by it, any decision of the planning board may appeal that decision to the Superior Court in thirty days, after that date upon which the planning board voted approve or disapprove of the site plan.
So subdivisions, it's only site plans that are vested, correct?
Subdivisions can be vested, too.
Okay. But I don't really see a need to define vesting on the subdivision. Do we care if they record the plan or not?
No.
I think it's split.
Right.
So I would propose that the temporary vesting would be the twenty-four months, but it would be all site improvements in the building's foundation, the exterior constructed within the twenty-four months. And the applicants didn't respond, are you planning to start construction, like, what's your timeframe?
Good evening, Dave Lemieux. Now, to answer your question, we'd probably be starting in the, in the, in the spring on the project, so that depends on funding. So I would, you know, like to request a little bit longer than that, maybe thirty-six?
To have the project basically completed? All the exterior. You may not have all occupancy permits.
Yeah.
But as far as all the butters, people driving by, the project's completed.
Correct.
Thirty-six?
Or is it the twenty-four?
Twenty-four was over thirty-six.
Yeah, the twenty-four is for the substantial construction commencing. But substantial completion is already set at five years, so that's...
Just under statute.
Correct.
Yeah.
So what he's asking for is that under six seventy-four thirty-nine, which is the vesting statute, that the twenty-four months just be extended to thirty-six.
Right.
And that's for the substantial construction to begin to commence.
And just to be clear, we're defining the substantial, the temporary vesting, as far as the definition, would be that all site work, all site improvements are completed, including the exterior of the building.
Okay.
So you wanted to include the landscaping now?
Yeah, all site, so that when you're driving by, you think it's a complete project.
Right, even though the inside still...
You may not have all the occupancy permits.
I completely understand, sir.
And that's just for vesting purposes?
Yep. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So Bart, does that make sense?
That makes sense, yes, so I'll come through.
Do we have to vote on that?
I don't think we need to vote on that, do we?
We just needed to define what we're vesting.
We need to define it, right? So I guess everybody's good with the thirty-six months?
Yes.
It's just vesting purposes, so, okay?
Yeah, if you could just take that official vote, because it does say that any more changes may be modified, so...
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the subdivision site plan approval shall be deemed to have lapsed forty-eight months after the date of approval unless an active and substantial development has commenced within the period as provided under RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. And for the purpose of vesting, the site plan approval shall be deemed to have temporary vesting rights for a period of five years after the date of final approval of the plans, provided that all site improvements in the building's foundation and building's exterior are fully constructed within thirty-six months after the date of this approval.
And be permanent vesting to it?
Well, I think it's the given, right?
Yeah.
Permanent vesting shall be granted upon... Permanent vesting shall be granted upon completion of all the... It's the project, because it's a five-year. So the temporary's gonna precede the permanent.
So you struck the words excluding the...
Correct.
Yeah, it's all site work.
Correct.
And just for clarity, the temporary vesting is also referred to as active and substantial construction. And that's what the board is...
Defining.
In defining in terms of the thirty-six months.
Yep.
And that makes sense to us. Thank you.
So that was a motion, right?
Yep.
So is there a second?
I just wanted to make sure you were done. Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? One five zero one. All right, that's it for that one, right? All right, thank you all for your input. We're gonna take a five-minute recess while I've got a... People leave. We ready to go? Yep, yep, that's fine. Just let me know. All right, awesome, all right. All right, next on the agendas. Pursuit of Dora's say six seventy-six colon four, LB and LD and Appendix A, subdivisions Appendix B, site plans in section thirty-two dash forty-five A, B two of the municipal code of town Newmarket and Hampshire. Notice hereby given that a public hearing shall be held for an application filed by CC Railroad Street Newmarket LLC, requesting a boundary line adjustment, site plan review, and special use permit approval for an eleven thousand one hundred square foot mixed-use three-story building comprising forty-one one-bedroom apartments and quite a hundred square feet of commercial space associated facilities and property facilities hopefully available property with address at three Railroad Street, Tax Map U three, Lot one thirty-eight A, and five Railroad Street, Tax Map U... U four, Lot sixteen, in the M two A zoning district. Okay, I will invite the applicant up to just give us a very brief overview because, so is there, before you start, are there any butters here? Are you guys butters to this project? Okay, so do you have, Bart, do we have something we can throw up on the screen to show what the...
Okay, this project, part of it was brought before you, probably a year and a half ago, where we got an approval for an eight-unit building on just one of the lots. We've since looked at merging the lots together and doing a larger building. I'm here with Mike Seibert and Ryan. Fun fact, this is Mike Seibert's last planning board meeting. He's retiring at the end of the month, so... And I'm here with Adam, who's the architect. They can just do a quick overview of the project and go from there.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ryan Hudok with Horizons. So, yeah, I think it's a pretty straightforward project, you know, forty-one apartment units with a little bit of commercial office space on the first floor, so it's somewhat of a mixed-use building, primarily residential, though. And as Ben pointed out, it's somewhat of, almost as an infill redevelopment project in a sense, because currently, there's that existing brick building, which was formerly used for, like, sign manufacturing. And then there's the existing office building, which is the current Horizons office on the parcel as well. So again, it's two parcels, but they're going to be aggregated as part of this project. And so I think, in summary, I think it meets pretty much all the zoning criteria, and there were past variances that have been approved that are being utilized for this. So since those variances are in place, it does meet all the criteria. And I honestly think it's a very well-thought-out project. It's a lot of careful planning was taken, and the owner has done a lot of outreach and things of that nature. So we accounted for a lot of considerations that may not be explicitly stated in the regulations. You know, for example, we understand that Moonlight Creek is very prone to flooding. Yep, down there. So we somewhat over-engineered our stormwater design to basically have zero net increase in runoff off-site to the creek. So that's one thing we did, and we also, the driveway approach on the railroad street, we kinda had it intentionally angled like that to reduce light pollution from headlights going on to abutting properties. So a lot of attention to detail with the site planning. And I know we're kinda here at a high level, but, you know, I think in terms of the engineering design, we meet all the design criteria and, you know, comply with all the local and any state permits that need to be obtained in the future. And I guess as part of this as well, kind of a nuanced thing, but a special use permit is also being requested because in the M two A zoning, mixed use, which this is classified as, requires a special use permit. And I think we pretty thoroughly meet those special use permit criteria, and which include a market analysis and fiscal impact analysis. And all of those demonstrate that this is beneficial to the community in terms of, you know, housing and market value and things of that nature. And lastly, you know, I know with the forty-one units and traffic's always a big concern, we did prepare a traffic impact study, which was included. And the findings of that were supportive of the project, effectively saying that, you know, there's no, that the traffic, there's no issues identified with the traffic or no need for, you know, off-site roadway improvements. The queue lengths and vision triangles were adequate to support this. And I think, too, it's kinda hard to tell just looking at the plan view here, but Main Street is much higher elevated than the site. Railroad Street, like, drops down pretty significantly, so although it's a three-story building, it'll be somewhat, you know, hidden from the main views of Main Street just because it's gonna be so depressed lower than Main Street there. So, yeah, those are some kinda big-picture things, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
My name's Adam Morrell, and I'm here to talk about the architecture of this project. This building has three primary entrance points that we've located strategically. Obviously, due to the grading on this site, the parking location is further down Railroad Street, so the pedestrian, the residential main entry is located adjacent to that parking space, which activates the corner as you enter this site. The commercial entry point is located in the upper elevation that you see on the screen right now, which activates the railroad street facade. And then, as Ryan had mentioned, on South Main Street, we have a pedestrian entrance for the residential tenants that faces South Main Street on that two-story exposed facade. And the idea on this project is multiple pedestrian access points, understanding that vehicular traffic will be taking place on Railroad Street a little bit further down towards the parking space, but we wanted to maintain that residential connection to the downtown and provide a walkable project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Just a quick question. So the main floor is all commercial or not? Did you receive a variance for mixed use on the main floor? Okay.
All righty. Thank you for that presentation. So Bart, we really, now we need to get into...
Yeah, just the...
The application. Do you have a recommendation on the application?
Yeah, I've discussed, yeah, you know, they're gonna provide updated boundary survey on the sort of consolidation of lots and sort of... So we're working on that, so we're, you know, we're waiting on that. Also, there's market analysis that was done in twenty twenty-two. Fiscal impact analysis has been updated. The FPD wanted to present the market analysis for twenty twenty-two, see if that's, if that's sufficient. So I think that can be tabled for next, but I think everything's been submitted. It's just a question at that point, moving forward, do you want an updated market analysis?
So when we get into the TRC, we'd talk about that. So you recommend we accept the application as complete?
Substantially complete.
Substantially complete? Anybody have any, go ahead. Does anybody have any questions for Bart relative to the application? Whether we should accept it or not?
We need to accept the market analysis, too.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the application is substantially complete based upon the information provided by the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's being second. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor of accepting... All those in favor of accepting the application as complete, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to nothing. So now we should talk about setting up a TRC?
Yeah. Right, so I just thought, realistically, we have the holidays approaching, so we get TRC in January, beginning in January, hopefully, based on schedule, and then, you know...
Chief, Fire Chief, DPW, and go through a bunch of the technical details, you know, water services, sewer service, parking, that kind of stuff. So you're invited to come if you have a chance to attend, it's not a problem. Yeah. So do we have any volunteers for TRC?
When, so when in, we're thinking in January?
Yes, ideally it would be in January. I know Jeff expresses interest too.
Okay, so Jeff?
Yeah.
Abigail?
Yeah.
Anybody else? I'll do it.
I will, pending any word conflict.
All right, let Timothy do it.
I would like to try and make it so.
So Jeff, Abigail, and Tim.
Tim, yeah, perfect. And so you will coordinate with the applicant and whatever for scheduling that TRC with the town departments and then everything else, right? Okay.
Just to confirm if there are any questions.
Yeah. Do you guys have any questions at this point? It's very, very preliminary, we're just starting, but if you have any questions, we'll certainly try to answer them at this point. Probably haven't heard enough information yet to have a whole lot of questions.
They just said that they inquired with the abutters about any concerns to the initial plans, and I was kind of curious who they reached out to.
Okay.
Can we have your name?
Yeah, name and address.
My name is Gillian Arquette. Yep, 79 Railroad Street.
And you are an abuter?
Yep.
Okay.
And so you got notice of the meeting?
Correct, yes. But we weren't contacted by the developers to make any input to the plans, and I was just curious.
Yeah, we'll work through that.
Okay.
We'll figure that out. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing, right, and then we'll... We need a motion to continue.
So I guess, do you guys have any questions on the scheduling?
Please come up to the microphone, just so people at home can hear. Ben, please.
What was the date for the TRC meeting?
We don't have a...
Yeah, we're planning for early January.
So like the first week or second week in January?
Yeah, early second week.
So that would put us to a February...
February meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
So do you know when our meeting is in February, Bart? The date?
14.
I was going to say, I don't want to spend Valentine's Day here.
I mean, oh, three. Make a motion to continue the hearing until February 2024.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM? Yep. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all, we look forward to working with you.
Right, thank you.
The abutters and the applicant. See you in January. While they're leaving, Chairman's report, I have nothing to report. Planner's report, do you have anything, Bart?
Yeah, I've had more than hopefully has noticed, probably have a survey out, public space and housing survey, so I encourage listeners to this to take it, especially if you're a New Market resident. It's part of the master plan update process, and this really will help drive questions when we go into the decision-making portion of the process, which is like community events to forecast what the town would like to see how to evolve in the next five years. So it's on our website, right in the front page, if you want to click on the link, the survey link, and have hard copies too, if people don't have access to the internet, so please stop by the planning office to pick those up.
Yeah, I think it's very important that we do that.
Yeah. Would it be appropriate to put some of the surveys at the library?
Absolutely, yeah. So right now, this week, I'm going to put surveys in different locations, like the housing authority, you know...
Senior Center.
Senior Center, multiple locations within the community, as well as advertising as well, like we have some platters up already right now. So we're going to keep posting, go into different businesses, especially the downtown area, to see if they're interested in putting that there. And that's QR code, and also hard copies as well, if they're more appropriate, so...
Yeah, the more the merrier.
Yeah, ours will be distributed to like all the residents, except that it's within the association, so that might be something you consider doing for your association.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I know I've reached more, contacted them, so we'll be on par with that. Yeah, so we're reaching out to different neighborhoods and so on.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we're having our next meeting tomorrow, Master Plan Subcommittee.
Right, 5:00, right?
5:00, yeah.
Excellent. So any...
Are those televised?
Yes.
Anybody?
You know, when we have the abutters here or stakeholder systems in our projects that we are thinking about, we are approving, or we are discussing, I think it's pretty really beneficial if the chairman or vice chairman explain to the public like how the process works, because we don't assume that the public knows all the limits.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it will make sense to just give them the basic intervention to what the process looks like and what their role is. So I feel some of that is a little bit of a confusion in that, I mean.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, it's a valid point. We'll do that, I'll do that.
Yeah, I think we always do that, always a reminder at a meeting about the processes, but kind of to that point, one of our initiatives that we're kind of integrating here in Town Hall is little short videos on how the town government works, and how the planning board works, how the planning department, and so that's kind of these shorts, maybe we'll, you know, will help people understand, you know, what the process like, you know, just give a brief synopsis and then, you know, we can give more details at different venues. I don't think that would go a long way, you know, especially people coming into the meeting, okay, I know what's going to happen, because...
Yeah, they're seeing the videos, yeah.
Well, it's to that point as well, for the board and the public to really understand what is the specific ordinances and what do we have purview over, approving or not being able to deny. Just because we don't like something doesn't necessarily give us, particularly now with the appeal process through the Land Use Board, ability to deny, you know, particular applications, because if they meet the zoning requirements, they meet the zoning requirements. We might have bad plans, right, and we may want to modify our ordinance, you know, but, you know, if something is meeting the actual, you know, language of the ordinance, it's, you can't really, you know, vote to not approve it. And I'm not saying that, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of gray area, particularly like on the special use permits, and as we know from the discussions on the application tonight. But then there's all, you know, also a lot of just black and white down the line as to what is required for a specific application. Do they need it, or do they not need it?
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's a very valid point, though, to, we should talk about that every meeting, let them know what the process is, because you're right, they could sit there and have no idea what's going on. That makes a lot of sense. Anybody else have any committee reports or anything?
No.
Two, three committee members are absent tonight.
On purpose.
All right, if nobody has anything else, Jane, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you all.